Okay. My name is eight twenty-six, trustee Lawrence.
Here.
Trustee Lawler.
Here.
Trustee Leeflet.
Here.
Trustee Healy.
Here.
Trustee Katsinas.
Here.
Trustee Malani.
Here.
Mayor Dodge.
Here.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five special meeting Olympic.
Mister.
I think Mary's tired.
Mister Chairman.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees' special meeting of October fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
So motion, a second, any comments or questions?
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Leeflet.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Mayor Dodge.
Aye.
Approval of the October twentieth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes.
Mister Chairman.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to approve the minutes of the Board of Trustees' meeting of October twentieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second. Motion, a second.
Trustee Katsinas.
Aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Healy.
I abstain, I did not attend that meeting.
Mayor Dodge.
Aye.
Oh, trustee Leeflet.
Aye.
Okay, it passes, thank you.
We're gonna declare more breaks for you, Mayor.
Okay.
Next item, please. Next item, please.
Okay, the proclamation honoring Northwestern Medicine St. George Cancer Institute.
Before we read the proclamation, would you please come up and introduce yourself and come up by the microphone if you could?
Good evening, my name is Jamie Ott and I am the Living Well Coordinator at Northwestern Medicine St. George Cancer Institute.
Thank you, so, um, thank you for what you do, do you wanna give us like a, a quick overview before we have? Go ahead.
Sure, um, so we recently opened at Northwestern, we have two locations in Warrenville and Geneva and we expanded to the Orland Park area. We offer free services for anyone affected by cancer, we have, um, a wig boutique, we have exercise classes, counseling, any, it does not matter where patients receive treatment, they don't have to go to Northwestern to receive treatment and it's throughout the whole Chicago land area.
Thank you, and again, thank you for what you do, I'm glad you're here in Orland Park, Madam Plurk, would you read the, uh?
Yes.
Proclamation.
Whereas the Village of Orland Park proudly recognizes community organizations that contribute to the community's health, vitality, and overall quality of life, and whereas the Northwestern Medicine St. George Cancer Institute opened in Orland Park in August of twenty twenty-two with the generous support of its philanthropic partner, the St. George Foundation, and was officially named the Northwestern Medicine St. George Cancer Institute soon thereafter. And whereas the Northwestern Medicine St. George Cancer Institute is one of several Northwestern Medicine locations caring for more than ten thousand newly diagnosed cancer patients each year, providing advanced academic level cancer care to residents of Orland Park and the surrounding region. And whereas the Northwestern Medicine St. George Cancer Institute offers supportive oncology services provided by Northwestern Medicine Living Well Cancer Resources, ensuring patients and families have access to compassionate, whole-person support at every stage of their cancer journey. And whereas the Institute features a state-of-the-art infusion center with private chemotherapy rooms and onsite infusion pharmacy and laboratory and radiation oncology services, all designed to bring cutting-edge treatment closer to home. And whereas the Northwestern Medicine Living Well Cancer Resources, now celebrating its twentieth anniversary, has expanded to the St. George Cancer Institute to increase access to programs that promote emotional healing, physical wellness, and community connection. And whereas the Living Well offers all services at no cost to patients and families, including counseling and social work, support groups, fitness and yoga classes, art therapy, nutrition, education, medical presentations, and a wig boutique, helping individuals affected by cancer find strength, hope, and resilience. And whereas the directors of the St. George Foundation and the leadership of Northwestern Medicine have long recognized the importance of bringing comprehensive academic-level cancer care to Chicago's southwestern suburbs, ensuring equitable access to prevention, diagnosis, treatment, and long-term survivorship resources. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and board of trustees of the Village of Orland Park hereby recognize and commend Northwestern Medicine St. George Cancer Institute, Northwestern Medicine Living Well Cancer Resources, and the St. George Foundation for their ongoing dedication to improving the health and well-being of individuals and families in our community. Their commitment to compassionate care, innovation, and community partnership reflects the very best of Orland Park's values, service, empathy, and excellence. Dated this third day of November, twenty twenty-five, James Dodge, Mayor and Mary Ryan Norwalk, Village Clerk.
Excuse me, we would like to recognize you and the organization as a community organization of the month, so we we have some frameable things for the office, right? Should we run it? Go ahead.
Thank you very much for selecting Northwestern Medicine Living Well Cancer Resources as your community organization of the month. We recently celebrated a ribbon-cutting at our satellite location at the St. George Cancer Institute in Orland Park to increase access to supportive care services for all individuals affected by cancer. Living Well offers counseling services and support groups, fitness, yoga, art, and nutrition classes with a wig boutique. All programs are donor-funded and offered at no cost to those diagnosed with cancer and their families. Our services are open to anyone impacted by cancer, not just Northwestern Medicine patients. Thank you so much to the Village for this honor, we are so proud to serve the Orland Park community.
Keep us posted on, on things, because we'd like to, as we go forward, we're rebuilding our website, we're gonna try and do more to bring awareness to nonprofit and charitable organizations in our town, so we'd like to keep you guys on top of that list. Thank you. With the, the board, I'd like to consider the three items related to Waterfall Plaza next, take the agenda out of order, is there a motion?
Under thirteen.
Yeah, items under thirteen, there's three items related to Waterfall Plaza I'd like to consider next, trustee Leeflet?
I move to, I'm sorry, it's stapled upside down, I move to, um, move the items in number thirteen, twenty twenty-five dash zero zero seven two, twenty twenty-five dash zero zero seven one, and twenty twenty-five dash zero eight eight three, um, up from the agenda so they could be addressed now.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion, a second, call the roll, please.
Trustee, uh, Leeflet.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence.
Aye.
Trustee Lawler.
Aye.
Trustee Healy. Trustee Katsinas.
Aye, but one thing, should not the residents speak prior, agenda specific?
About to do that, trustee.
Thank you, aye.
Trustee Malani.
Aye.
Mayor Dodge.
Aye.
Call the unscheduled citizens first, Mr. Nugent.
Mr. Nugent.
My name's John Nugent. I, um, I'm opposed to all three variances, twenty twenty-five dash zero zero seven two, seven one, and eight eight three. I can comfortably say that I strongly oppose this project, I'm very surprised how it did get through planning, and I'm encouraging today to vote no, but if not, after listening to me, if you'd at least consider voting tabling. I know two of you live relatively close to this project, I think you'll understand what I'm saying about it. And I also wanna qualify that not only do I think it's a bad plan and a bad design and bad for the village, I would rank it in my twenty-four years of living here as one of the five worst projects, and the reason why I can state that is we rarely have a bad project, we have great staff, we have good planning, we've studied everything we've planned, and even recently we've updated the coding, formals with the food and that to make it easier so they don't even have to go before plan unless they have, drive-throughs and outdoor dining. The eight negatives of this project, one, the special use for the parking between the east and the south setback was expired and it was specifically not to apply in the future, but you're gonna apply it now. There was a twenty twenty-one agreement with the prior owner that there was additional agreements in twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty twenty-four for repairs, which include even all the landscape that was removed in the front. The current owner acquired this property two and a half years ago, so you can't put all the blame on the prior owner. The current owner also chose to ignore a village agreement. The existing layout of the parking is already non-conforming. The variance includes a hundred and five parking spaces are needed, but only ninety-five would be proposed. One of the solutions which doesn't solve the problem was no drive-through usage after nine P M. I actually don't even have a problem with the drive-through gonna be open, why penalize them and not allow them to compete with Dunkin' Donuts or McDonald's or the others? The impact on the existing Orland Brook Drive residents, and when I say Orland Brook Drive, I don't mean the two properties closest to this, I mean from a hundred fifty-first to a hundred fifty-ninth. For those who aren't paying attention, the only street between eighty-second Avenue and ninety-fourth Avenue that goes through is Orland Brook Drive. Orland Brook Drive has no light at a hundred fifty-ninth street. Also, um, allowing drive-through facilities between the building and the street is a variance, nobody does that in the village, nobody, currently. And my eight, the right-in, right-out modification which brings it up to code forces all traffic to go to Orland Brook once they leave the coffee shop, but forces even more traffic than currently now to go to Orland Brook. Especially if they're going in the opposite direction, but all coffee shop traffic will go to Orland Brook as it just says. This impacts northbound as well it is as those who are trying to cross the hundred fifty-ninth street. I may not be able to read it all as I run out of time, but did make a flyer, if Mary can take it. The two-lane drive-through configuration currently is nonexistent anywhere in town except for two well-established national food chains, and we all know who they are. They know what they're doing, and even both of them had to correct them. So now we wanna give a coffee shop of a local shop and a strip mall that nobody in town has the same ability that two of the most known, successful drive-through chains in the nation had to change. May I have three minutes?
You're, yes.
Okay, so I have points I can give to you, um, but to sum it up real quick, and if you guys wanna read my notes, I would strongly encourage you to table it, but I think all of you should be aware that if you're at a hundred fifty-ninth street, and it depends on if it's Tuesday at five, Thursday at night, Saturday.
Please finish.
People on a hundred fifty-ninth who wanna turn to Orland Brook, it's extremely, extremely difficult. Now you wanna add.
Mister Nugent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Call the first item, please, let's pass this out, here, pass it out.
Okay, thank you. Special use permit amendment for Waterfall Plaza site improvements. Eighty-seven fifty-two, a hundred and fifty-ninth street. That would be twenty twenty-five zero zero seven two.
Is there a motion or a second?
Mister Mayor.
Trustee Leeflet.
Sorry, I'm just trying to get to it, um. Excuse me. Okay, that's seven, you said seventy-two?
Seventy-two, yes.
I move to approve the Plan Commission action regarding case number twenty twenty-five dash zero zero seven two, special use permit amendment for Waterfall Plaza site improvements, and I move to adopt an ordinance entitled Ordinance Amending a Plan Development, Waterfall Plaza eighty-seven sixty west, a hundred fifty-ninth street.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion, a second, any comments or questions from the board? Staff, do you, uh, wanna address some of the questions that were raised?
Ted, can you put up our?
Excuse me.
So, so the first stuff had to do with prior agreements, this is actually amending the prior agreement, is that correct? At the, Mister Nugent is correct, um, the conditions of the previous, uh, approval for the last time this was approved was never, they were never fully met. This will replace that and has actually pretty much covered everything which is improving the parking lot, improving the facade, re-putting all the landscaping back in, it is true that they did cut downs of trees that they were not supposed to cut down. That has been resolved, a fine has been paid, um, so moving forward, this new, um, plan development will replace the one that was, was, was previously referenced. Here we go again, Ted. Did you turn it off? Yep, let's just look at this, um, so this is the site plan that was referred to. If you notice at the bottom, we do have a right-in, right-out now, a hundred fifty-ninth, that is a change, is a condition. Um, we have separated the drive-through from the parking lot, um, the driveway, um, both driveways are on the same spot as before. It's just how you use them is different, um, there is a double drive-through which will merge into one lane in order to, for, for payment and pickup. These are the modifications, so yes, it is true that they are, um, adding some additional parking between the building and the street, this is not something staff usually supports, but in this particular circumstance, this is a shopping center that has been vacant for a pretty long time and is in need of refreshing, so there is some additional parking that is being placed between the parking and the street. There will be a portion of the driveway, although very far back along the building, will between the building and the street also. Yes, it is true that is not something to usually support, um, in the cases that have come to the board more recently, those have been proposed right up against the street. This is in a place that's, a driveway already exists, so it's a little different circumstance.
Marcus, wanna address the foundation plantings?
Uh, yeah, so it's an, it's an existing strip mall, um, there is concrete right from the building straight to the parking lot. You have your five-to-seven-foot-wide sidewalk, uh, our code typically requires one of our landscape zones to be, the foundation plantings, which you would have to have foundation plants on all four sides of the building. Currently, the site has pavement on all four sides of the building, there would be no sense, uh, to add plants to the rear of the property in between the building and the property line, just because that alley's already pretty narrow. Same thing on the front of the building, uh, there will be some potted plants, you know, up to the, um, the landlord's discretion, but with this plan, we need that ADA access, so we can't really cut out concrete there to plant more plants.
And a lot of this is just because we're retrofitting an existing shopping center, there already is a fence on the north side, correct? And it, uh, that's being increased to eight feet?
So the fence is currently six feet, it's not in good condition, uh, there, the petitioner was asked to replace the entire fence and then, uh, east of the building where cars are exiting the drive-through, that fence will have to be eight feet in height, and that is to screen the headlights from cars in the drive-through lane.
I think that covered most of the, can you?
The, um, I have some, any other questions from the board?
Mister Mayor.
Trustee Lawler.
Quick question, so eight feet in the drive-through turning out, um, is that gonna create a blind spot for cars coming out of that driveway then?
Uh, no, the fence does not go all the way to Orland Brook, it's mainly just where, uh, it exists currently.
Okay, and is it going to be a, a right turn only out of that parking lot?
Uh, no, you can do right or left, it is a one-way exit, though.
The, um, questions that I have is, I'm not a designer or an architect, but this building's been ugly for a long time. And so how much is the petitioner estimated to be putting into remodeling this building?
Do you wanna address? The, the answer is six hundred thousand dollars, and then there's the renderings.
Okay, so about a six hundred thousand dollar upgrade, and staff, do you feel that this is, uh, the issues that were brought up about the, the light at a hundred fifty-ninth, that's I dot's control, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Do we think I dot will ever put a light in there? Give us your honest opinion.
No, probably not.
Okay, uh, the parking variance, is that generally within the standards the village has applied over years in terms of variance?
So the way, our ordinance doesn't have a minimum parking requirement, it has an exact parking requirement. And then we have flexibility, twenty percent, within the discretion of the director. With the teneting as it was in the presentation, I think we're okay. If it starts to get busier with the additional ones, we may have to talk about that, but we would give those as the next tenant.
So we have an exact parking requirement, um, no minimum, but you base, we've granted, boards have granted staff some flexibility, so it's effectively giving you a lower range, a minimum.
Potentially.
By definition.
If, if we, if staff feels that, that parking is accommodated by a multi-tenant building, it isn't something we generally do for a single user, but for shared parking, we have a twenty percent tolerance up and down. If you go more than, put too much parking in, then it's a variance, or too less, then it's also a variance.
If you'd like to, we gave a resident, if you'd like to step up, please identify, come up to, no, 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 hang, come up to the microphone, identify yourself or have, uh, one of your representative.
Hello, my name is Adam Halim, I represent the property owner for this project. For, we did reach out to Lover's Lane to ask if we could get a, an agreement in place if we needed extra parking. We did get a verbal agreement, but we wanted something signed, so we did send it to their attorney.
So it's a work in progress.
It's a work in progress, just in case we needed extra parking.
All right, um, I guess, staff, go ahead.
Yeah, just one more thing to address, currently, so parking is based on users at the site, so there's currently only two tenants at this twelve-unit center, so currently they're, they're well above their parking demand right now. I think that within that twenty percent threshold, you know, we want, we wanna get tenants in to the center, so I think making these improvements and increasing the parking slightly will benefit this overall.
Yep, it, um, and more broadly, not for tonight, not this item, George, staff, we should probably set up, a set, a discussion, perhaps a separate board meeting to tackle the fundamental issue I think staff faces every day. We're at a stage in Orland Park's development where we're gonna have a lot of fill-in developments. We saw that earlier, a ten-acre parcel surrounded by a lot of existing things, any change can be jarring. Here, we've had a plaza that has struggled for, I wanna say decades, I don't think that thing's really been all that viable, so what was the video store that was in there?
Orland.
Orland Video, you can tell all the folks that have been around for a while, and so it struggled for a while, so I'm thrilled to see an investment. This is, it's tough, so I think we need to think thoughtfully about the standards you apply and the development community can expect when they're coming in to take over what, I don't wanna call it distressed, but it was a challenged property, and it's old. And the design considerations of twenty years ago aren't the design, excuse me, considerations of, of today, so that's where my head is at, is there any other comments or questions from the board?
Mister Chairman.
Trustee Malani.
You know, I mean, several points here, right, this thing was built in nineteen seventy-eight after the Whitehead, right? So, yes, I remember the Whitehead, I used to ride my bike there, um, so, um, thinking about how the Orland Video was configured, if you drive down heading towards the north and take a right out of there, you're straight across from the driveway of the condominiums. So the people trying to get out of their garage, coming across, are gonna be facing this traffic coming out of a drive-through. Right, so it, it's, unfortunately, we're dealing with a configuration that was built in nineteen seventy-eight, things have changed, right? So it's like, would you build this today? Probably not, right, so we're making do with what we have, and the coffee shop is going into the Orland Video spot, is that, and using that whole section, then you'll be building other stores in the rest of it, or? Restaurants, too?
Ted, can you take, talk to the mic, please?
So we're looking at mixed use, I guess, is the?
We have, it goes, drive-through, coffee shop, pizza restaurant, and then a Chipotle use, similar to Chipotle, same style, a jujitsu gym, a women's salon, then the dentist has four units, then there is a store that sells wood and trim, then we have a vacancy, but we do have a lease out for a barber shop, and then a popcorn shop.
Okay, so you have potential tenants once it's?
All of them have signed a lease, and I believe some of them will be submitting this week, some of them are open.
Okay, thank you. I guess the other thing I'm looking at, too, is like the flow off of a hundred fifty-ninth up the driveway to get through to the drive-thru, it just seems kind of like it's going to be congested there, you know, I mean, and, uh, I guess we're not really looking to reroute that drive, right, we're gonna try and use the existing parking as it is and then expand into the grassy area, you know, so it's, again, we're making do with what we have.
Yeah, the, the issue with the coffee in particular is that it's not necessarily fast, so that's why we added the second drive-through lane to try to accommodate the queuing, um, yeah, anyone who's been in a Starbucks line, Starbucks does not move fast. I'm not saying this is Starbucks, I just want to be really clear about that, so we, the traffic study that they had given us had given us a number of queuing spaces. They modified the plan to, um, meet that, that peak parking demand for queuing. So that's why we moved to the two-lane design, this was not the way it was originally.
Sure, and, you know, going back to the right turnout on the Orland Brook, yes, there's no fence there, but if I remember correctly, there is a set of cars that park there on a regular basis, and some of them are vans and things, so you may be blocked from view from the left. And also the buildings are there, the condos, so it's like, I guess, you know, I could sit here and beat myself in the head over it with this, but it's like, there's no other way to route the traffic, right, you know, and?
There, there really isn't, and, I mean, the cars that are really exiting the drive-through are gonna kind of be moderated just by the fact that you still have to pay, pick up your stuff, and then go, so it isn't like everyone's exiting at the same time, right? I, I don't think that there's a continuous streams of. I don't think that there's a continuous stream of cars on Orland Brook, so there's... There are natural gaps. And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, is the pavement still a little bit wide at that point? Because it widens out. The north driveway, the street profile is actually still a little wide there? Yeah. So it's in the process of widening as it gets close to the intersection, to accommodate an additional turn lane.
So the... So now that we have history with two-lane drive-throughs, I mean, is this an optimal flow for a two-lane drive-through? Because I see the cars that are crossing over from the right lane to looks like either a pickup, or how is that supposed to function?
I think that the cars, once they order them, they'll pull into the main queue. I suspect, and I don't... We talked about the other drive-throughs, and I don't know about this, and the owners, operators here, is that there's still one person taking the order. So when they're at the one person taking the order, when they're done, and they go to the second person, that person moves forward, and then when they're done with the second person on lane two, then that person moves forward, and then they deal with the person back in lane one again. Is that going to be the way it's going to flow? Okay, very good. So that naturally regulates. What it's doing is it's allowing us for additional stacking, if they're that busy, so...
So which leads to my next question, it probably doesn't matter. That right lane, then, will never be used?
Yeah, the only... I'm not sure about that bypass lane at the very end.
It's just more of a bypass lane, you know?
Mr. Chairman?
Justy Katsinas?
If I could just ask, Steve, how many times have or have we put drive-through windows on existing buildings? I'm not aware of any, but that doesn't mean...
In the four years I've been here, I don't remember doing that, but it's not... In other places I've worked, we have retrofitted. I know we've done it for Dunk... In previous places, we've done it for Dunkin', MCAPs usually, yeah.
Do you see by doing this here on this older building that it might open the door for other people who might be in a plaza that thinks, well, I'd like a drive-through, too?
People can ask, that doesn't mean we're going to okay it. Like I said, it took us a very long time to get to this design, probably longer than most people are willing to wait. And we, yeah. Representative was mentioning that we have a... They had done a traffic study to work out the traffic on this particular location also.
I went over there over the weekend and just parked in the parking lot for about 15, 20 minutes, and the amount of traffic, I was surprised coming southbound on Orland Brook Drive to get out at 159th and almost witnessed an accident from someone that was eager to go eastbound and was aggravated and just pulled out, and I heard brakes and horns going off. And I would be curious to see how many traffic accidents at that intersection, but, you know, when you look at the north-south streets in Orland, there's very few that go direct.
I agree with you.
And that road is traveled heavily by our residents, and we're going to add a lot more traffic with this there without a signaled intersection. I just think it poses a significant hazard to people using it, particularly our residents that are used to using it.
And I can let engineering talk about the traffic study details, but I will tell you that when we were working out possible solutions to this, planning was really pushing to moving, straightening that curved driveway out, the one, the middle one. But it actually, we needed the space for the stacking, because we know that it takes a while to take a left. The right moves pretty quickly, but in the gaps, because there's got to be... And everyone goes on and off 159th, deals with the gaps, yeah.
Car dealership also is busy on 86th, so you got them coming, and, you know, you can't get out fast enough. So I have a real concern about that location with traffic control, and I'm sure the coffee shop would be very successful, the traffic that that would bring in addition to... That's already there without a signal. I just have a real concern about the traffic.
Yeah, I mean, regarding the signal, IDOT doesn't really like to... Well, they don't really want signals very close to each other, and then they don't like to consider signals for something that may happen. They would want to see the development there, what traffic it's actually generating, and then use that information to do a signal warrant analysis. I agree, it's very tough to turn left out of there. That's why, as part of this, we, you know, restricted that southern one to right in, right out. So it's incremental improvement. Yeah, I just... It's a tough situation on 159th, so we're always looking for ways to just get a little bit better, and we think, at least through that driveway, it is.
Mr. Mayor?
Justy Lee Plant, are you with the petitioner?
Yeah, I'm Nick Petroski, I'm the attorney for the petitioner. I just wanted to... And he did mention the right in, right out. That was kind of our way to at least try and manage the traffic flow. Right now, it is something that I think the issue is that you... Right now, you can turn left on into the property without even having to go into the left turn lane, and so to try and resolve that potential situation where it's not even a left turn lane at that point, you have to go all the way to Orland Brook, we're adding this right in, right out as a means to try and create a better flow and make it more safe for everyone involved. So I just wanted to at least address that quickly.
Mr. Mayor?
Justy Lee Plant?
I know that this was a long time ago, but at that, there was a time when not only were there, was there the mall on the east side of Orland Brook, but there, the mall, this mall that we're talking about was incredibly active on the west side of Orland Brook, in addition to a very busy bowling alley and with a small overlap with a car wash across the street. And people were able to navigate through that. So I think that, you know, certainly we need to be mindful of traffic safety, but that in addition to, if I understand correctly, we're doing a study on the traffic lights in Orland Park as well, right? That's... Is that true?
That was proposed in the budget. I think you're referring to the traffic signal study, the corridor studies on 151st and 143rd.
Right.
So wouldn't it be along 159th?
Oh, it just would be, okay. Well, in any case, I think that, I think we're paying attention, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't consider this a reason not to allow this development.
Justy Healy?
Mr. Mayor, I've got a couple comments. One is, I used to work at, right near that intersection for 17 years. I always considered it one of the more dangerous intersections, just with the traffic flow as it is, and this will increase it. On the other side, it takes courage for a guy to, for a guy to take on this development. And this piece of property, I think, has been underserved for many years, and here's a guy trying to make something of it, and it's going to better it and better it for the, for everybody. So I'm a little bit torn, you know, between those two concepts. And the other thing is, was, did I hear right that there was some ignoring of some of the complaints against the property by the previous, the previous owner?
No, they didn't fulfill the obligations. They had a timeline to make improvements to the building, to make improvements to the parking lot, to make landscaping improvements, and they didn't meet that timeline.
Okay, and this goes through...
The new owner purchased the property, and then we've negotiated with them since to get this project back.
This is all part of the project now?
Right.
Okay, well, I, again, congratulations, it takes a lot of courage to do that. When the village will be benefit if we had a good store there.
Any other comments or questions? Steve, am I seeing that right, that there's a right in, right out in pork chop on 159th?
Yes, that was the improvement that Nick was talking about.
Do we think that people, you know, this is a challenging intersection, then Aladdin, if I recall the conversations properly, there's the start of a D cell lane to get to turn left onto Orland Brook there? And so technically, by state law, people shouldn't be crossing those double yellow lines anyway?
Yes, you're referring to on 159th.
159th, right in front of where this current entrance is, correct?
Yeah, so the storage for getting, turning left into Orland Brook Drive, if you just wanted to turn left into this development.
Because we're now going to force people who are used to turning left to go to Orland Brook and then come through.
Yeah, so it should be a safer situation.
Yeah, I gotta tell you, I'm not enamored with that change, because I think most people will ignore it and they'll overshoot the pork chop and turn left anyway. So just from my experience watching a lot of drivers, and I'm convinced 97% of drivers really should never have been anywhere near a driver's license. I just think that that... I get the spirit of putting in that pork chop, I don't know if I think it's a great idea. I just really do think that people will just overshoot it and ignore it. So that would be one that I, I don't feel is compelling to have there, and, you know, this is, this is a tough parcel to redevelop, which is why, to the spirit of the comments earlier, you know, we, we really should make sure that we put it on the agenda as a board and for staff. How do we want to think about fill-in and redos? Because we're going to have a lot of them going forward. We're going to have a lot of small parcels coming in, we're going to be tough to fit, like what we saw earlier with Prowlwood. So let's put that on the agenda for a future meeting, perhaps an extended special meeting to just tackle that. And then on 159th and Orland Brook Drive, I think everybody who's been in Orland for any length of time knows it's a dangerous intersection. And so that might make it to the top of our list for our legislative priorities, to see if IDOT will ever change how they configure that intersection. Because Aladdin, it's not... IDOT's pretty clear, they wouldn't, they don't necessarily have the traffic warrants or the accident rate to put a light there, correct?
Yeah, and then they'd also look at the spacing to other signals, and then there's the nearby ADA signal.
Yeah, I think that just to, to answer the questions, we should put that on the list of, let's have a serious dialogue with the state about what that looks like, because I think we can all agree, Orland Brook is challenging. So we're not going to, we can't, can't put all that on the back of this particular petitioner. Let's get this building fixed. So I'll open it up one more time for questions from the, comments or questions from the board, because we've got a motion and a second. One quick question I'll ask for the board, quick consensus. Do we like the pork chop or not? That right in, right out? I think I understand why you did it. Is it critical?
I mean, if you're concerned with it, is the design like not dissuading left turners enough? I think that can be adjusted to a more standard pork chop. We do think just controlling access on 159th is important.
Does it impact the other business, Lover's Lane, I think it is?
I believe they were good with it, but I don't want to speak for... I think there was a statement submitted or something along those lines.
Well, like I said, I mean, I don't want to want to stop the progress here, but I, like I said, I'd like, I don't have a problem if you guys think about reconfiguring, then maybe bring, check this back with the board.
I think the standard-sized park, standard-sized pork chop would have removed parking spaces from both properties, including the one that's not subject to this. Is that correct? When they widened out the flares, we were going to lose parking spaces?
Only on Waterfall.
On the Waterfall property, yeah.
Okay.
So it's that balance again between...
No, I get it. Fill-in and redos are, are going to be a challenge for us going forward. There's a motion and a second, correct?
Mr. Mayor?
Justy Lawrence?
I drove that property in the evening to see what would happen with my headlights as, as I went through the drive-thru. I see that my headlights, even on the low beams, go over the top of the roof of the garage facility that's in front of those condo buildings. And my headlights directly hit the second floor level of four units or four windows. I don't know for sure whether they were four units or perhaps two units. My high beams would hit the lower level of the third floor. I wonder about a nine o'clock closing as being sufficient, especially in the winter. I was thinking that if the residents there became irritated with headlights in their living rooms or bedrooms, whatever they are, actually, I think maybe they're bedrooms, because someone had their drapes open and I could kind of see in, and it looked like it was closets or something like that. Would there be consideration for offering those residents perhaps that dark-colored film that could go on their windows if they were terribly irritated by it? People that were, you know, that need to be in bed at that time of day?
I don't believe we had complaints from the neighbors at all about that, or did we?
Yeah, so residents did bring up concerns at the plan commission meeting, but it is an existing condition of the site. I know Family Video had their drop-off over there already, so it already was the access to that side of the building.
Yes, and we, we're not, to the best of my knowledge, we have not required someone to make off-site improvements to a person's personal residence. However, someone can pull shades down or draw blinds after it gets dark, if that's a concern. Again, the headlights, you know, I don't know what the traffic's going to be going through the drive-thru that late at night, but in the evening, most people do draw their blinds anyway, so that people can't see in, and that would definitely solve the problem.
Mr. Mayor? Justy?
Quick question, just, again, this is just something for the future to consider. Do we know who owns the green space just to the west of this, this property? The reason why I ask is it looks like there's a road that goes around that comes out to 88th Avenue, which there is a light there, and it doesn't look like it would be a very big extension to possibly put some sort of a connection in there to drive people, you know, maybe pushing some of the people coming out of this, this little area and going out onto 88th.
Yeah, so that's the Joe Rizza dealership. There's the Acura, which was proposed on that vacant lot next to, just east of Porsche and west of Waterfall Plaza. There's actually a large retaining wall there, so there's a huge, great difference between the Rizza property and Waterfall Plaza. So we've considered cross-access, but unfortunately, just due to the topography there, there'd be a lot of space taken up from Rizza's property.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, there's a motion and a second. Call and roll, please.
Justy Lee Plant? Aye. Justy Lawler?
Aye.
Justy Lawrence? Justy Healy?
No.
Justy Katsinas?
No.
Justy Maloney? Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Before we call the next item, why don't we, to pick up, I should have said this while we're in the active item, let's keep an eye on what the residents' feedback is that are right next to it. If they're unduly impacted, let's bring it back and think about it. Okay, next item, please.
Okay. 2025-0071, special use permit for a restaurant with a drive-through service window and outdoor seating, Mirage Coffee House &amp; Company.
Mr. Mayor?
Justy Lawrence?
I move to approve the plan commission action regarding case number 2025-0071, and I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, "Ordinance granting a special use for a restaurant with a drive-through service window and outdoor seating, Mirage Coffee House &amp; Company, 8752 159th Street, Unit 12."
Second.
So motion and a second. Any comments or questions? Call and roll, please.
Justy Lawler?
Aye.
Justy Lee Plant?
Aye.
Justy Lawrence?
Aye.
Justy Healy?
No.
Justy Katsinas?
No.
Justy Maloney?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Motion passes.
2025-0883, special use permit for a site plan with a drive-through window, Waterfall Plaza.
Mr. Mayor?
Justy Lee Plant?
I move to approve the plan commission action regarding case number 2025-0883, special use permit for a restaurant with a drive-through service windows and outdoor seating, Mirage Coffee House &amp; Company, and I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, "Ordinance granting a special use with modifications, Waterfall Plaza, 8760 West, 159th Street." Second.
So motion and a second. Any comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Justy Lee Plant?
I just quickly wanted to comment that I've, you know, that was the area that I lived in in the early 80s, when I first moved to Orland Park, and it was an incredibly busy strip mall with thriving businesses and the same residences there as, that are there now. So I'm not, you know, certainly I would want to know if they, if current residents were experiencing anything, but I don't know that it ever was an issue in the past with regard to headlights disrupting, you know, households at nighttime. And so I just wanted to come.
There's a motion and a second. Call and roll.
Justy Lee Plant?
Aye.
Justy Lawrence?
Aye.
Justy Lawler?
Aye.
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
No.
Trustee Katsinas?
No.
Trustee Milani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Now, we're going to go to number four, Advisory Board Appointments.
entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Justine Lawrence.
I move to consent to the appointments by President Dodge as fully referenced below.
There's a second?
Second.
There's a motion in a second. George, will you briefly let the board know the plan for kicking this off, swearing everybody in, forming rules and regulations?
Yeah.
Briefly.
There's an overwhelming support or people have really embraced these new boards and commissions. So I believe it's something like 200. So what we're going to do is we're going to have two orientation sessions. One on the 18th, is that right? 18th or 19th? And one, so that'll be a.
Evening, right.
That'll be an evening that's during the week. And then we're also going to do another one on the 22nd, which is going to be a Saturday morning. So it's going to be an orientation for all current and new board and elected officials. We'll do overview FOIA, OMA, and more importantly, there's going to be the intent, really the intent of what is, what is this whole reconstruction that has occurred with the boards and commissions. And so it'd be about two hours for the whole process.
Thank you. There's a motion in a second. Call and roll, please.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lee Plant?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Milani?
18th or 19th.
Mayor Dodge? Any, we've done non-scheduled, okay. Accounts payable for October 20th, 2025, through November 3rd, 2025 approval.
Trustee Healy?
I move to approve the accounts payable October 20th, 2025, through November 3rd, 2025 in the amount of $2,699,203.97.
Second.
So motion in a second. Any comments or questions? Call and roll.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lee Plant?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Milani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
We'll now go to the consent agenda. A, payroll for October 24th, 2025, approval. B, 2025 resolution for adoption of Village of Orland Park Controlled Burn Policy. C, Village Hall HVAC Improvement Project Phase Two, final approval. D, Civic Center ADA Door Installation Project. E, ITB 24, 25-063, 143rd Street, Brick Paver Leveling Bid Award. F, Schuschler Park Phase Two Design Services Contract Amendment Supplement Number One. And G, Fireworks Notice of Cancellation.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Lee Plant?
I move to approve items A through G of the consent agenda.
Second.
So motion in a second. Any comments or questions? Call and roll.
Trustee Lee Plant?
Aye.
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Milani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Development Services, Orland Park Police Department Backup Dispatch Center Wireless Communication Facility.
Through motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Justine Lawrence.
I move to approve the Plan Commission Recommended Action Regarding Case Number 2025-0667. And I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, Ordinance Granting a Special Use for a Wireless Facility, Orland Park Police Department Backup Dispatch Center Wireless Communication Facility.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Milani.
Several questions. Where did this come from? I guess is my first question because originally we were not planning, I guess I should ask, start with the base question. Is this replacing the existing tower we have as a backup today? Chief?
So no, this is going to be a second tower that we're putting at the trade facility.
So we're going to leave the other one where it is today? That'll still be in use and then we're putting another one?
An additional one at the trade facilities.
And then this wasn't originally part of the plan. So how are we budgeting for this?
This is going to be budgeted through 911.
I thought this year or next year?
This year. 911 funds.
They got all kinds of money, don't they?
They did.
Okay. I was just curious because I, this was not originally part of the site plan or anything like that. So we're, what is, what is the need since we already have a backup tower?
Right, I think when they were, when we're going through the radio project, they determined this might be a benefit to have this tower on the southwest side.
Okay, and this is just a special use permit? We haven't seen the project come through yet. What are we looking at budget-wise? In that 911 fund that has nothing but deep pockets?
Yeah, I don't know what to call this. I can get back to you on that.
Okay. Is this another cart before the horse? We're getting the special use permit before we have the project defined?
Yeah. Right, so we ended up acquiring a second tower at a very low price.
It just seems odd that we're approving a special use permit, but yet we haven't budgeted to find a project or anything else yet. That's, I just, okay.
George, you want to answer those questions?
So we will, obviously, we have to, before we proceed with a contract actually built, we do need this, this. But what we will do is Chief and his team will get more information on the, for the, on the tower. But the, as they were, as you know, we're doing a digital radio build-out program right now.
Yes, and it's supposed to be completed in November, right?
That's the, that's the plan. And this only enhances that radio program. So on that side of town.
So we do not have effective coverage with what we have today? Is that what the issue is? And we need the extra tower? Or is this?
Today, today, as it stands with our analog radio system, we don't have effective coverage. When we, when we move fully to digital, we will have good coverage. And when they do this, we'll have great coverage.
So we're still, are we still running like a mixed mode where we have some digital and some analog at this point? Or is it?
It's not digital yet.
No, we have no digital at this point.
Okay. So by November, it should be.
The plan, hopefully this month, yes.
Okay.
Any questions? Trustee Milani?
Nope.
All right, there's a motion in a second. Call and roll, please.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lee Plant?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Milani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge? Land Development Code Amendment, Revised Rooftop Solar Panel Review Process.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Lee Plant?
I move to approve the Plan Commission Recommended Action Regarding Case Number 2025-0820, Also known as Land Development Code Amendment, Revised Solar Panel Review Process. And I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Amending the Land Development Code of the Village of Orland Park as amended.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Comments or questions? Call and roll.
Trustee Lee Plant?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Milani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge? Recreation and Parks, 2026 Southwest Job Fair Memorandum of Understanding.
Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the 2026 Job Fair Memorandum of Understanding between the Village of Orland Park, the Village of Tinley Park, and Orland Township.
Second.
And authorize the village manager to execute all related contracts subject to village attorney review.
Second.
So motion in a second. Any questions or comments? Call and roll.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lee Plant?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Milani?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Finance, An Ordinance Amending Title IV, Chapter III of the Orland Park Village Code Regarding Water Shut-Off Fees.
Mr. Chairman.
Trustee Katsinas.
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance Amending Title IV, Chapter III of the Orland Park Village Code Regarding Water Shut-Off Fees.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion in a second. Call and roll, please. I'm sorry, the questions?
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, if I could, Chris has a brief PowerPoint. The reason we're looking at this right now is because of our upcoming utility billing changeover process. So if he can just provide a little bit of an overview on that.
Thank you. Yeah, I just explained what this motion is about. It's really just, right now, our current code has a tiered, a tiered level of the shut-off fees. So the first time the water shut off, it is $75. The second time is $100 with another $100 deposit. And they hold on to that until they close the account. The third time is $150. So it really didn't deter any shut-offs. So we went with a single rate of $100, kind of met in the middle. And this also internally helped our processes with our new utility billing system. So using the old tiered system, the old tiered structure, we'd have to run similar, the same process three times. And it's just kind of more efficient to keep one, one structure, one rate. So I'll go into the, so yeah, on top of that, I want to just kind of give you an update on where we are with the new implementation. So we went from Enterprise CIS System, which is a customer information billing system, and we're moving down to Tyler Technologies. The implementation started early in 2024. And my team's been working pretty good, pretty hard on that for about a year now. We did postpone it a couple of times just to make sure we were absolutely sure we're ready to go. The goal was to streamline billing, offer new payment update features, improve service delivery, and integrate with the final piece of our Tyler modules. Why the change? Because the legacy system required manual processes and allow, and this also allows us to reevaluate processes internally. We, we had limited reporting and integration capabilities. In fact, with the new Tyler technologies, I actually have a staff member who spends part of her day importing manually journals from the old system into the new Tyler units. So I really look forward to having this more streamlined and wouldn't have to tire up for too much time of her day. The, it also has a new modern optimization, transparency, and online accessibility. So you, I'll show you a picture eventually here about how they have access online too. So the resident communication and outreach, we've already begun with social media posts. We have utility billing messaging modifications. We've, we've added a note on the bill. So anybody who received a bill in the mail, they were able, if they noticed, they read it, they would have seen that we had an announcement a new system is coming soon. We'll put more FAQs and timelines up on the websites. We'll be notifying users or account holders by, with emails. We, like I said, social media posts. And then we also, through this whole implementation, our staff will be available. And we're putting more staff, actually, with our cashiers. We'll have them helping out our utility billing clerks with answering questions about the whole implementation. We expect a high influx of.
So what kind of feedback are we getting so far?
So far, we're not getting anything because nothing's really changed. But once anybody that's going to want to go online onto their own account, they're going to have to just reestablish a, they'll have to r-register. So right now, the feedback is quiet. But when the transition occurs December 15th, we anticipate we will be getting some.
Yeah, let's figure out a way to be patient because people will be stressed for the holidays. The last thing you want to do is go change your billing address of your water bill. So just be mindful of that. Keep going, Chris, sorry, just, let's burn through this.
Not a problem. That's a good point, though. For residents, the key benefits of this is online payments and account access. Keeping, we are also keeping the same look of the bill. So you're not going to even notice it except for the, the account number that will look a little bit different to you. We also have, you'll be able to get text, email reminders too for due dates if you so choose to sign up for that notification. For staff, it's more intuitive billing program. It ensures accuracy and improves reporting, easier data management and auditing. And the software again links to our other, other modules within the village. This, this slide is just basically saying these are the final triangle, the final completion of our modules of our implementation within finance department. We had our financials that went live in 2022. Cashiering just went live with EPL just past June. And then this will be the final piece. Wonder if I skipped the, here, I did skip a couple. Here, I did skip a couple, that's where it's at. So, we are ready to go live on December 15th. Our staff are, we basically, as it shows, we checked all the boxes. Our staff are fully trained with the new system. We have a parallel billing test completed. We've completed multiple testings with parallel billing, data migration validated, and planned blackout period. So, there will be a blackout period. If I could just get into that a second. Our goal line will be December 15th, but the prior week will be a blackout period, starting, I believe, roughly December 8th is the day we will go blackout. So, the entire week, we will not be taking any payments online. We will not be taking any credit card payments in person or online. During that time, if any residents want to come into the cashier's office, to the cashier's window, and pay, they can pay by cash or they can pay by checks. We will actually hold those payments for the week until we are live in the new system. That way, we know all the information has been converted into the new system properly and checked and everything else and verified. And then, once that's all set and we open it up on the 15th, we'll be applying those payments that have been stockpiled for about a week. So, that's kind of our plan there. And the communication plan has been executed. We've already begun with social media, and more will be coming. What residents can expect will be a letter that will be mailed to their homes roughly around the 23rd or so of November. So, just in a couple weeks, they'll receive a letter. And we're planning that for about three weeks prior to the goal line, so they see it and they can hold on to it, and it'll have key information like their new account number. They may notice the new, the old number is maybe a series of seven numbers. This one's going to have a number hyphenated and another number. So, that's how they can, so that'll, the letter will have that information so they can use it moving forward when they log in online after we go live with the new system.
Chris, go ahead, let's keep moving.
Yeah, I'm just about done here. This is just a quick snapshot of what it may look like. You go online and you create your user, you register as a user, and then you link your user ID to your billing account. This is a, it kind of gives you an overview of your account. You can see the past billings, your water usage. And then, this is kind of splashed up there, but we have a couple of features. You can do your automatic EFT payments and then manage your bill history. Other than that, I just wanted to say thank you to the residents for their patience as we launch this updated and more efficient utility billing system, so.
Yeah, I think, George, you and staff, just make sure you keep the board apprised of progress because this is a change, and so it affects all of our customers.
Yep.
So, this rollout's got to be flawless in terms of communication and then support because it's going to land at precisely the time when everybody's thinking about something else. So, the emphasis, the pressure is on you and your staff to make sure that when somebody calls and they're confused or we're not, all of a sudden, have 3,000 water turnoffs because people simply didn't change.
And Mayor, we won't have any turnoffs. We're being very flexible during the first two billing cycles after the go-live for that very reason.
Okay, just, you know, bring back your future board meetings, hard numbers. How's it going? How many people have cut over, et cetera?
Okay.
Thanks. Do we call or roll?
No.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawrence?
I have a question for finance.
Sure.
I noticed that the proposed amendment, in addition to the change to a one fee charge, that the deposit requirement was eliminated. Can you speak to that, please?
Yes, it was part of that tier structure that really didn't deter. We didn't feel that it deterred anybody from getting their water shut off again.
Trustee Lawrence, that deposit only occurred on the second tier. It wasn't standard for every, it wasn't standardized. So, it was either standardized deposit or just eliminated, so they eliminated it.
Okay, I could see a reason for eliminating it. I was just wondering if it just wasn't effective or it was too difficult to manage? Because after all, if you're going to leave the property anyway, does it matter that they had $100 down? Because most of the bills are probably going over that, especially if they're late, right? They're late a couple months, for sure, it's going to be over $100.
Yeah, that was one thing my billing clerks did show some relief on when I mentioned that change. They said, "Oh, it'd be so nice not to have to track," you know, having to pay back that $100.
So, we're saving time, things will be more efficient because of this alone, perhaps?
Correct.
Okay, I love it. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a motion and a second. Any other questions? We'll call or roll?
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Leeplett?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Fiscal year 2025, budget amendment number four, 2024 rollovers and budget transfer.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawler?
I move to approve a net expenditure increase in the general fund by $267,495.56, a decrease in the capital improvement fund expenditures by $1,207,298.71, and an increase in the water and sewer fund expenditures by $2,825,911.45, and a net total amount of $1,886,108.30, as detailed on the fiscal year 2025 budget amendment number four.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any questions? Call or roll, please.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Leeplett?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Resolution determining the 2025 tax levy in compliance with the truth in taxation law.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawrence?
I move to adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution Determining the 2025 Tax Levy in Compliance."
Second. There's a motion and a second. George, you have a presentation?
Yes. Chris and I can do it, but the first slide. There we go. So, today, we're talking about the tax levy determination. What's happening today is the board is being asked to set the maximum tax levy. The actual tax levy will not be approved until December 1st, and at that time, the board can reduce the tax levy, but it cannot increase it beyond what is being approved today. December 1st is also the day we're going to approve the budget, and then soon thereafter, we file everything with the county. There's, so, the village's property tax is really made up of, the primary is for the retirement systems. The police pension is the largest, IMRF, we have our debt service, and then we have a very small general corporate, which is really primary to the library, not the library, the recreation. As a municipal library, technically, the library has to have the village pass its tactically on its behalf. So, this ordinance includes the library. The village's proposed increase in the tax levy is 3.75%. That's in order to capture new growth. When that happens, if we don't do that, then current residents are not being, current residents have to pay for the new growth that's happening within the village. So, the library's increase, right now, it's not official, but it's proposed at 4.5%. Since we're not exceeding 5%, the black box is not required, but the village will publish the black box. It's a technical requirement. It was a lot more important in the old days, but we're still going to do that. And like I said, the public hearing for the tax levy is on December 1st. This slide right here, Chris can, you know, answer any questions, but property tax levy, as far as what is being proposed in 2025, is less than what was in 2022. And as far as the historical EAV, the amount of money that a resident will pay on their property tax bill is determined eventually by the county, and then one of the factors that is being, the primary factor used is the equalized assessed valuation. So, over the last 10 years, that EAV growth has been, as average, 3.75%, which is where we're getting our 3.75% assumption.
George, the EAV has grown and the county reassessed.
Yes.
Correct?
So, EAV growth, it happens naturally with new growth, right? And that's what we want to capture. And then there are reassessment, there are triannual reassessment years as well.
You pretty clearly see the reassessment in this graph.
Yeah. '22 to '23 was a 19% increase.
Mr. Chairman?
Trustee Maloney?
Just a quick question to clarify. So, as we see a slight increase in our levy of 3.75%, it's driven by this EAV, but historically, we've kept our tax rate relatively flat, correct?
And that's what's, and we're continuing to do that.
Right.
By mirroring what we're requesting with the anticipated increase in EAV, the resident will continue to pay the same amount for the village's portion of a property tax bill.
I just wanted to point.
So, it is flat in that sense.
Thank you.
And everyone's kind of seen this, as far as the portion of an average taxpayer's bill, the village is only 6%. Most of it, as you can see, is the school districts, the fire district is 14%. So, as far as the village is concerned, out of $1, 6 cents goes to the village. Chris, if you want to just talk about this graph?
Sure. But this graph is, kind of puts it in a different perspective when you're talking about the property tax. It's really based on our budget for 2026, what we're proposing for 2026 budget. Property tax amounts to only about 23% of our total general fund revenues. We have, as you see, it's 42% of sales tax, that includes the home real sales tax, and then the income tax is the other big one. So, these three are the biggest, you know, revenues, but really, property tax, as I said, is 23%, not significant. We use that mostly for our main operating type of expenses that we have obligation to pay and no options to cut back on. So, we can see on the right side of that property tax levy, of that 23%, we're spending, I think it's just over $6 million for a police pension. We got about $3.2 million for debt service payments. The IMRF is another, for the other non-police employees of the village, contribute to IMRF. The village has the employer side to contribute. And then we have a small, I think it's about $1.2 million that we're putting towards the recreation and parks, and the remainder is FICA, and it's about $100,000, $100,000 for general that we're putting into the general operations.
Chris, I just think it's, thank you.
Sure.
I think it's important for, you know, if there's a walkaway number or idea for the residents that only, of all the expenses Orland incurs, only property tax is only covering 20% of it. So, it's 80/20. So, 80% of our budget effectively is coming from all these other sources, and we levy the property tax per law, I'm pretty sure it is, for some of the obligations to retire retirement benefits. So, Orland's blessed to have this mix because the taxes could be higher if we didn't have the benefits of the retail environment.
And one of the other things, something happened to that one. One of the other elements to point out here is, as Chris mentioned, I think it's, did you say 1.4 million is recreation?
1.2.
1.2? And that's out of a budget of 4.6 million? So, it's important to note that unlike other communities out there that'll have a park district and they will have a separate property tax item for the park district, the village really doesn't. So, our parks programs are subsidized by the, well, what?
Retail and other taxes.
Retail and other taxes, obviously also user fees. So, we're very fortunate to have that ability to do that. So, these are just, you know, our increase, the police pension increased, and the request for the pension levy is based on actuarial evaluation that was completed at the end of 2024, the 1.2 million that Chris mentioned for recreation and park, IMRF levy increase, 140,000, and then FICA. It's important to note that the pensions, both police and IMRF are state mandated. If we don't make our contributions, the state now has a mechanism for diverting state shared revenues. We know of, you know, some south suburbs that have underperformed or have not made their contributions, so the state diverts it and forces it to go into their police pension fund.
George, round numbers, police pension funding is what, 70, 75% funded?
Yep.
And we're on a path to get it back into the 90s in a handful of years, correct?
Yeah, so, the actuarial evaluation assumes a 2040 requirement where it has to be 90% funded, which is the state law. The village actually follows 100% funding by 2040. Now, that off-ramp, the 2040 off-ramp, there has been discussions at the state level to, you know, move it out, which will help all of the taxing bodies because it'll give them ability to smooth that actuarial valuation.
One of the things, thank you, right, one of the things we're going to keep a close eye on is it's a non-trivial impact on Orland's budget based on what they do with Tier Two. It'll immediately impact because that was, now, mostly police and fire at the moment, but I would imagine that's going to roll out to IMRF and other pension.
So, what they have been talking about at the state level is basically making, eliminating Tier Two. So, all of the benefits that Tier Two currently receives would be similar to a Tier One in the village's case, that would add about $30 million, is what I believe we at one point reviewed, and like you said, it is non-trivial. That is, those are real dollars.
Okay, sorry, keep going, keep going, the presentation, so.
And the next slide is for the debt service funding. So, part of the property taxes is for debt service. We have an obligation based on the debt, the GO bonds that we have right now, to pay about $7.6 million just in payments and interest and principal. We will only be levying 3.2 million because we're going to be abating the rest of it and have those debt obligations covered by, there's a couple of different ways. It'll be the water revenues, which also is incorporated into the water rates that you're paying right now, and then the utility tax and home real sales tax that has just been increased in 2024.
So, just to summarize, the total village levy is 13.669 million. That's an increase of 3.75%. And that 3.75% again is to capture new growth. For example, the Main Street Triangle is coming off the tax rolls as of January 1st. That will be new growth. That's just one example, so we want to make sure that we're able to capture all of that. The library will be incorporated into our tax levy ordinance that gets filed with the county, and December 1st is the date where the board formally adopts the property tax So, the library's planning on doing November 17th as that date. They put a placehold over 4.5%. And obviously, the library is different than the municipality because they are very dependent upon property tax.
Any comments or questions from the board? Pretty straightforward. I think that one of the things that Trustee Leeplett and I have talked about is, this can be a rather confusing topic for residents, and so I think that we should always try and endeavor to make sure that we do simple explainers, that the value of your property, for example, is controlled by the county assessor, right? All municipality can do is say, "We need $13 million to run our operations," and then how it actually gets allocated for any one household, you're at the mercy of what the county assessor said your house is worth, and then what happens with all the other taxing entities in your town, let alone, if somebody gets a big tax break on their property, somebody else has to chip in. So, we'll try and build out that explainer because it matters. And the other key point is, the library, for example, comes through us by law, but they're entirely dependent on property tax. So, we'll talk about that one. So, I guess, any other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Healy?
The library could also cut costs, and that would be another way to save money, too. I mean, it's not just the revenue side, there's a cost side, and, I mean, historically, that's never going to happen.
I...
But I'm just speaking from common sense.
Speaking from the heart, I think.
That's right, Trustee Healy.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Leeplett?
We enjoy some really wonderful amenities here at Orland Park, including a spectacular library, which I do have a soft spot for because I was on the board for 10 years. But I will say that I'm, you know, we are fortunate because we have so many, the village itself has multiple revenue streams, as we heard tonight, and that makes a big difference in what can be provided to the residents.
As we get ready to call this motion, we've talked about this, as we made a couple of big decisions with this. This is like the last piece, now there's the mechanics. You know, we set the budget, we kind of know what we're thinking about spending, we know we're asking for revenue, we've got a lot of assumptions baked in. We made big investments in public safety, expanding the police department, we've got a lot of big capital projects that are queued up, but I think as some of us have talked individually, you know, depending on which economic expert, you know, you go to, you could foresee a pretty challenging '26 in the US economy, or it could be great. And, you know, if there's a recession, it has an impact on our revenue. If there is what I would call the risk from AI of structural disruption, not displacement necessarily, but disruption in the labor markets, I think you could see people being nervous, pulling back on retail shopping, pulling back on loss of income, et cetera. So, you know, we're not out of the woods. I think it's a solid budget, and we're going to keep a close eye on this. And the other big thing that I want to make sure that George, you know, and I think the board would agree, next year, we're going to spend a lot of time looking for process efficiencies to manage our costs. I think the demand for government keeps going up, the tolerance for taxes has gone down or flat, and so I just think we need to be mindful that we got it. Next year should be the year of continuously investing and continuous improvement. So, just telling you, that's going to be a theme for next year.
Absolutely, and that service delivery review is going to be an important part of that because that is going to help us, help guide us in that path, but all of the department directors agree on that approach.
Any other comments before we call or roll? Call or roll, please?
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Leeplett?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
No.
Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Resolution making the fiscal year 2026 proposed annual budget available for public inspection and setting a public hearing date.
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Leeplett?
I move to adopt a resolution entitled, "Resolution Making the Fiscal Year 2026 Proposed Annual Budget Available for Public Inspection and Setting a Public Hearing Date."
Second. Motion and a second. Comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Trustee Lawrence?
George, I have a question about, from the budget...
George, I have a question about, from the budget summary document, about the line item described as internal service insurance. So between 2025 and 2026, on the revenue side, there's a significant difference between the yearly amounts. Could you explain that to me?
Chris can.
Sure.
Okay.
Are you referring to the 26 summary from what was-
The summary document, yes.
From October 5th?
The one that's on the agenda for today.
Oh, I see. I'll have to get back to you on that, I'm sorry. Well, I'm, I'm going to actually have the new, a new version of the budget package this week.
Trustee Lawrence, today, the budget's not being approved. All we're doing is approving it to, for the, for making it public, but we're going to, we'll, we'll get you, we'll get the full board a response on that, your question.
Okay, and that would not just be the revenue side, but the expense side? It just looks strange to me. I'm sure there's a logical explanation.
One thing we did differently this year is we, we budgeted it differently. We used to have a lot of, in, a lot of budgeted transfers into the insurance fund and then also expensed out. Here, we're actually, any contributions to expenses, we're almost netting them out into the, in the budget. So it looks like it's, it's more, it's a similar net, but it's not coming in a total totality.
I kind of follow along, but maybe we can get on the side and you could just show me more exactly that part of it.
Yes, for sure, I'd be happy to.
Mr. Chairman. I, I think I see what she's referring to. In 2025, it says it's $11,518,931, but in 2026, it says $1,110,000. So it just doesn't, expecting another one.
For sure. A lot of that 11 million last year was actually transferred into the insurance, like I said. Now it's coming in as a contra-expense. So it almost just negates, it nets out the expenses. So it's just a little bit different structure of how we're budgeting it out this year. It makes it cleaner, makes it more, more sense when you're looking at it. It just confuses year to year, I could understand that.
Any other questions? Call a roll, please.
Trustee Lee Blatt?
Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge? Village manager? Service delivery review request for proposals.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Lawler.
I move to approve the selection of Rath Tullis for $418,175 and Baker Tilly for a cost of $216,700, and authorize the village manager to sign each agreement subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Motion, a second. Comments or questions? Call a roll.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lee Blatt?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Advocacy and legislative consulting selection.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Lawler.
I move to approve the selection of Matthew O'Shea Consulting and Michael Best Strategies for one-year terms for a cost not to exceed $60,000 each, and authorize village managers to sign each agreement subject to village attorney review.
Second.
Motion, a second. Comments or questions? Call a roll.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Lee Blatt?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
No.
Trustee Katsinas?
No.
Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Motion passes. An ordinance amending Title II of the Orland Park Village Code regarding boards, commissions, and committees.
Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Lawler.
I move to adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance Amending Title II of the Orland Park Village Code Regarding Boards, Commissions, and Committees."
Second.
So motion, a second. George or Jim, do you want to give a quick explanation of what we're cleaning up here?
Sure. So you may recall back in July, we did a revamp of the whole board and commission structure, and at that time, we did, we included language that called for seven, up to seven members for each of these board and the commission. So we've, as George previously mentioned, we've had tremendous amount of interest, and what this ordinance would do, it would increase it from up to seven to up to 11 members. And the last thing this ordinance would do is also speak to how a chairperson is, is appointed to each of these. So what the, the board or commission would do is they would make a recommendation to the mayor, the mayor would make an appointment, and then the trustees, you would advise, provide advice and consent to that appointment for the chairperson position.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board? Call a roll, please.
Trustee Lawler?
Aye.
Trustee Lee Blatt?
Aye.
Trustee Lawrence?
Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Aye.
Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
Any non-scheduled citizens and visitors for public comment on items relevant to village Board comments?
Trustee Healy?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. One thing I'd like, just like to point out, not a critique or anything like that, but I just want to point out that in the last three presidential elections, Donald Trump won each of those elections in here in Orland Township. And so I would, and, and some of them by a pretty good margin. I would say that the consensus of the Orland people are, are, the majority of them are with the MAGA agenda, which is smaller government and lower taxes. So as we enter into finalizing this budget, it seems to me that we've done a lot of new spending and new, new ideas, and it comes along with a new administration, that we, we should try and show some restraint and, as far as spending, and I hope in the next year that we can, we can do that. In addition, maybe some of that restraint could go to funding part of that, the shortfall on the road projects. It's an $80 million project, 5 percent inflation, let's say it's $4 million a year that we're falling behind by not getting this done. So still lobbying is going to hopefully help and, but I mean, maybe by cutting back $1 million in costs that we could help fund it ourselves. So, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Katsinas.
It's been a long meeting, no comments.
Trustee Maloney?
I'll, I'll share something, I guess. It's the, the, maybe if I could get my sentence right, the Owls Flag Football Team, that's what I'd like to talk about. They competed in the 2025 Special Olympics Flag Football Tournament in Peoria, and they took first place and came home state champs. So congratulations to all of the members of that team and all of the supporting coaches and staff that helped them out along the way. So thank you very much, and have a great night.
Thanks, trustee. Trustee Lawler?
Well, first off, I want to say condolences to Joanna Leaf Blatt, trustee Leaf Blatt, who lost her father this week. We're thinking about you, and I know it's been a tough week for you. Also, I wanted to, I, I got the opportunity to go to our special recreation awards banquet a week and a half ago, and I was really impressed by the two gentlemen, well, actually, I was impressed by all the people that are a part of that program. But Nick and Justin, I thought, did a great job, and I'm glad I got to go there. I know trustee Maloney speaks about them all the time, but I finally got to see it for myself, and I just want to say, they do a great job, and I just want to commend them for all the hard work they do, and, you know, I, I look forward to working with them in the future.
Trustee Lawrence?
I was lucky enough to be available that night and join John to see the award ceremonies and give out awards at the special recreation awards banquet. And in addition, I did later contact Nick, and I told Nick that we have a number of advisory boards that have a few open positions, and I asked Nick to consider whether there were some of the people in the community of that, that might want to serve on an advisory board, parents or, or, or some of the adults that might possibly be able to contribute to one or more of those advisory boards. The other thing I want to discuss is the Citizen Academy. So I was able to make my schedule so that I could attend several of the sessions. I wish I could have done all of them. I swear to God, I worked so hard to try to, but I couldn't. I truly was impressed by the quality of the presentations, the interaction from our residents, and the gratefulness that each of them, who, who spoke to me, expressed to me about what they learned and how happy that the village is offering this sort of thing. And I suggested to them, tell your friends, tell your neighbors, you know, people at church, because we think we ought to do this again so that more people in the village get a better idea of what we do. And many of them also said they wanted to get involved in one of these advisory committees, that it opened up their eyes to how they can be a part of directing what's going on in Orland Park. Thank you.
Trustee Lee Blatt?
Yes, I just, thank you, trustee Lawler, for commenting on my dad. And, you know, I just, I'm, again, you know, I always come back to thank you to the staff because, you know, the, what we do here is complicated, so in addition to doing their jobs every day, they also prepared for the Citizens Academy, and it was very well received, which, you know, and it, and we continue to hear, we continue to see how important it is, not only to share information, but to make sure people understand that they can receive it and they can ask questions. And I, I am grateful that we see more and more residents coming forward, asking questions, wanting to know how things are done, and feeling comfortable being able to say when they're not sure about something, or when they're not sure if they want, if they like something. Because it just, it's always a wonderful opportunity to provide the answers that make day-to-day life in Orland Park easier, because when we're all on the same page and when we are all informed, everybody, everything is just much easier to do. So, thank you.
Just a couple of quick comments, we'll make it quick, it's been a long day, you know, Joanna, our thoughts and prayers, it's tough. Yeah, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's tough, so we're, we're thinking about you on that one. Special Rec, Orland Park has made, made it a thing for many, many years to support Special Rec, so I think that that's a great program, and let's, let's make sure we always stay committed to that. And then heard wonderful things tonight about staff, so tip of the hat to staff. I meant what I said, that the people who went through the Citizens Academy were genuinely appreciative, and to a person, they all noted how much it felt like staff really cared, and that when you're sharing information about your departments and what you're doing, the energy and the passion resonated with the residents. So it's a pretty popular program, and we will, we'll definitely do that again. And we're making some, some changes that goes with elections, and as we figure out, you know, a lot of things about Orland Park going forward, so I'm optimistic that we're going to do a lot of great things in '26. And, you know, God willing, the U.S. economy keeps chugging along at a healthy rate, and lots of stuff that we see from AI turns out all for the good, and we'll keep investing in, in the way we're doing it. So George, that's going to be a theme next year, is every time, we're going to keep hitting that drum, what are we doing to be more operationally effective and efficient? Dad knows the story because we gave you an increased budget for using artificial intelligence. We're going to push that pretty hard. So with that, I think we should end the day. Anybody object to going home? Okay. Sir, motion adjourned.
So moved.
I think trustee Maloney was asked to be recognized first, so give me one second.
Move to adjourn, please.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. You sure there's only one executive session? There's a motion and a second. Call a roll, please.
Trustee Maloney?
Aye.
Trustee Katsinas?
Trustee Lawrence? Aye.
Trustee Lawler?
Trustee Lee Blatt? Aye.
Trustee Healy?
Aye.
Mayor Dodge?
Aye.
We are adjourned at 10:09.